All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. There's still some folks coming on, but I think the meeting is doing what it's supposed to do now. Apparently Webex is gonna give us hell because we are hopefully gonna be changing our platform soon. So thank you all for being patient with us as we figure out the technical difficulties. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee representing the Fourth District, Councilman Burnett representing the Eighth District. Councilman Cohen will be joining us. I saw him on earlier. He may still be signing in. Councilman Costello representing the Eleventh District. Councilman Glover representing the Thirteenth District. Councilwoman Porter was on. She's on again. Councilwoman Porter representing the Tenth District and Councilwoman Ramos representing the Fourteenth District. Representing the Office of the President, I see Nikki Thompson on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nikki. Matt Stegman, are you there? And Aaron DeGraff, are you there either? All right, and representing the Mayor's Office, Natasha Mihew. And Nina Themelis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nina. All right, this afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill 21-0078R, Investigative Hearing Baltimore Police Department Disciplinary and Complaint Process for the purpose of requesting that the Baltimore City Police Commissioner appear before the City Council to brief it regarding the Baltimore City Police Department's current process to file and investigate a complaint of misconduct against a Baltimore City Police Officer. The current disciplinary process followed if an officer is found to be guilty of misconduct in any current efforts to improve or overhaul the disciplinary and complaint process in the Baltimore City Police Department. This bill was introduced on November 15, 2021, and was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. Open the floor to Councilmember Burnett for comments on the sponsor.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. And sorry for any background noise. There's construction going on nearby, so my apologies for that in advance. So in short, the purpose of this hearing, or the reason I asked for this hearing, Mr. Chair, is that our office has been contacted by several Baltimore Police Department officers from multiple districts out of concern for how the disciplinary process has been handled. We've been told on several occasions that officers who are Black or African American and from Baltimore City are disciplined far more often for minor offenses than those of their white counterparts. Additionally, when officers are making formal complaints against their supervisors for targeted attacks and potential discrimination, they are being retaliated against and feel that there's very little accountability within the department. We know that all disciplinary actions are reported on officers' records, which are reviewed when promotions are being considered. And we've heard from superior officers that when being considered for promotion, these minor offenses can often be reflective of insubordination. These practices are a tool of institutional racism, racism, which we know is prevalent in the city of Baltimore and is used as a tool to keep officers of color, or at least even told that folks feel that officers of color are being are not being promoted into higher ranking positions. And so I felt like having these conversations with BPD officers, it warranted a discussion within the committee to bring this to the forefront for us and our colleagues and members of the public to discuss further. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett, and thank you for bringing the bill to the committee. Next, we will hear from agency representatives. Please use your, state your name for the record. We're gonna start first with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Elena Di Pietro from the Law Department. The Law Department approves the bill for formally this efficiency. It's an appropriate way to invite officials to come to speak about these matters before the council.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for having us here today. For the record, my name is Michelle Wurzberger, and I am the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. I am joined by a number of my colleagues today. Deputy Commissioner Brian Nadal, who is in charge of the Public Integrity Bureau. He will lead our presentation, but he will also defer to a number of other subject matter experts from our team, and those are Director Shannon Sullivan, who manages our Consent Decree Implementation Unit. Major Jason Callahan, who also works in the Public Integrity Bureau. Director Olafemi Akani, who is managing our our Equal Employment Bureau, or unit, sorry about that. And of course, as always, we have Shannon Conway. So if you could allow me to share my screen, I will pull up our presentation, and then I will turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Nada.
Director Wurzberger, I want to get through the committee reports first, and then we'll go to you guys to do your presentation. That way, we can just wrap up everybody else.
My apologies, sir. Just, just for the record, we did submit our, our bill report and an attached, the attached presentation that we think should go on the website for all to see.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question. The resolution was very specific about asking the Commissioner to join us, and I'm curious as to, we don't see him here.
He is not here. This is the team that manages this particular topic, and they will be able to give you the information that you want to discuss far better than the Commissioner could.
Thank you. We're gonna come back to BPD. I first want to refer this to the Baltimore City Administrator's Office. Nina, do we have a report out from the City Administrator's Office?
Hi, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis here at the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. We do not have a report from the Office of the City Administrator. I believe that this may have been, and I have to double check my records, referred in error, but I think Council Services or the President's Office would need to confirm that, but I will check back.
Okay, thank you, Nina. And finally, the Department of Finance.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Again, Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I think both referrals to Finance and the City Administrator's Office were done in error. So I believe those referrals should have been removed from Legistar, but maybe not in far enough advance for this hearing.
Okay, thank you, Nina. Appreciate it. I will kick it back to you, Director Wurzberger, and we will turn over the presenting privileges.
Okay, does everyone see my screen there?
Yep, we see it.
Okay, all right. Okay, and so I'm just gonna say just a couple of words, and then I'll turn it over to DC Nadal. Of course, this is an issue that we take very seriously. This is an issue that has, has, has been problematic for a very, very long time. In the realm of the Consent Decree, which you'll hear a little bit later from Shannon Sullivan, this is one of our largest, one of the largest sections in the Consent Decree. And that is because if you're not able to hold your officers accountable, you're not gonna have the trust of the residents. And, and we take that very seriously. We've, we have been working very diligently to, to change how we manage this section of the department and in fact, make sure folks are being treated fairly and equitably. And with that, I am going to turn it over to DC Nadal. And just an FYI, can't find how to mute myself, so it may take me a couple of minutes to do that. I promise to be quiet while I do it. Nadal?
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you to the board for hearing that from us today. As Michelle said, this is a very important topic that we work on every day. We work on it every day, not only within the department, but also with DOJ, the monitoring team, and the judge. As you know, we meet with the judge once a month and go over various topics. Public Integrity Bureau and the integrity system is certainly always one of those topics. Next month is a full hearing on the Public Integrity Bureau, which we do with the judge quarterly to make sure that we are in alignment and everything is functioning correctly. As the screen shows, a well-functioning accountability system in which officers are held to the highest standards of integrity is critical to BPD's relationship with the Baltimore community. We want to make sure that individuals in the citizenry who have issues with any of the actions of any of our members are able to bring them forward, discuss them with us, and make sure that officers are held accountable if they have done something in violation of either a policy or state law. The next slide talks about what the Public Integrity Bureau is. The Public Integrity Bureau is established for the purpose of investigating allegations of misconduct by members of the department while ensuring that all personnel abide by the rules and regulations governing their conduct. In order for PIB to reinforce the department's goals of constitutional, effective, and respectful policing, PIB's investigations serve to ensure that all BPD members perform in a manner consistent with the expectations and policies of the department, as well as all local, state, and federal laws. Upon receipt of a complaint or an allegation, every effort is made to ensure a thorough, fair, and timely investigation. PIB investigates both internally generated complaints and complaints generated by members of the public. Every complaint received is reviewed and investigated. PIB investigates all complaints of officer and/or any BPD member of misconduct and coordinates with Civil Rights, excuse me, the Civilian Review Board on complaints that are within their jurisdiction. BPD's Special Investigative Response Team, referred to as CERT, also resides in PIB. CERT is a multi-disciplinary BPD unit tasked with conducting, conducting investigations of Level III use of force, which is the department's highest level use of force, any in custody death, any fatal motor vehicle accident or crash, which involves actions of a BPD member, and also investigates any specially assigned cases which are assigned either by the Commissioner or myself. I'm gonna turn it over to my major, Major Callahan, to go over misconduct. I think it's back one slide, Michelle.
Good morning, everybody. Yes, so as the, as the slide shows here, the slide, this slide provides the BPD definition of what is police misconduct. And the Public Integrity Bureau investigates not only publicly generated complaints, but complaints that come from within, meaning our, our own officers filing complaints that they are required to do so as well. This does not include complaints about police service, police services, such as complaints about arrival times or general applications of BPD policies. Those would be referred to as service complaints. However, we do have a requirement that while investigating service complaints, if we see misconduct, individual misconduct upon a police officer, we will turn that into an internal or external complaint as applicable. For example, you know, if we had a complaint where an officer had had shown up at a call late, and we determined that it was, that it was because they were asleep on duty, that would be an example of something which would turn into an individual complaint. Next slide, please. So some of our examples of misconduct are abusive or discriminatory language, excessive force, any for, which is any force that would be, that would be unreasonable or over the top. Failure to operate the BWC is required. That includes failing to activate, failing to keep the body worn camera activated, or failure to report a malfunctioning body worn camera. False statement and untruthfulness that is both in their statements and in their written reports. Obviously, that is a very serious infraction if we find that a member has intentionally made a false statement or a false report. Improper stops, whenever an individual is stopped or detained without reasonable articular suspicion or probable cause or any other legal justification that, or that the individual is planning to commit, did commit, or is about to commit a crime. One of the example of an improper stop would be if, you know, officer without reasonable articular suspicion stops a vehicle because the driver gave him the middle finger or some other type of similar action. That would obviously not be a, not be a, a appropriate stop. Retaliation, which would be taking any adverse action against an individual because they've engaged in an activity protected by law or our policies. An example could be if an officer tells a motorist during a traffic stop that he will issue a warning for a minor speeding violation. However, when the, when the motorist decides or tells the officer that he or she is gonna find a, file a complaint, and then the officer decides to go back to the car and write out a citation as opposed to the original warning, that would be considered retaliation. All forms of retaliation in the Police Department are strictly prohibited, and, and they carry very serious discipline when proven. Also, our BPD classification protocol, which there is a link to the website in, in regards to that, that is, that is a protocol that was designed and developed in accordance with the monitoring team and the Departments of Justice, and it's also outlined in our PIB manual as well. Next slide. So there are a variety of reasons why it is very important for citizens to make complaints against police officers. Obviously, number one is to identify those employees that we have that are not complying with our policies. Also, you know, and obviously, if they are not following our policies, you know, there is an element of discipline that is required to ensure that they can, that they follow our policies in the future. But it also provides us an opportunity to see what we as an agency need to improve at, or if our policies have deficiencies and we need to improve upon our policies. And last but not least, it also, you know, if we have a well-functioning disciplined Police Department, that obviously provides a much better service to the citizens of Baltimore, and we, and our disciplinary process is a, is a pivot, plays a pivotal role in doing so. Next slide, please. So anybody can make a complaint. It doesn't just have to be the individual that was the source of the misconduct. It can also be somebody that observed it, observed it on behalf of somebody else, a parent or guardian of a youth who experienced the misconduct, or a fellow officer. And actually, you know, through our, our epic program, ethical policing is courageous. You know, we have, we have encouraged our officers, you know, to intervene upon other officers when they observe misconduct taking place. We also, through our, through our Consent Decree Implementation Unit, we are conducting a number of inspections, which also result in complaints that we file here at, at the Public Integrity Bureau. So it's very important to, it's also very important to know that complainants do not have to be Baltimore residents or US citizens, and complaints can also be taken anonymously. Now, we do recommend that anonymous complainants, we would rather them not be anonymous because that assists with the investigation and the follow-up that is required with the investigation, but an anonymous complaint will still be investigated as thoroughly as any other complaint that we receive. Next slide, please. There are several ways to make complaints against us. One of the easiest ways is to, is to go online at our website and click on the Report Misconduct tab, and that will immediately direct you to a form that you can make a complaint, and then it will be upon submission. It will go to our Intake and Classification Unit, which will determine the appropriate location for it to be investigated. We can also be reached by phone, either at our, our regular phone number or our 24-hour hotline. We can be reached via email. You can also go to any police district and file a complaint. Our officers and our supervisors are required to handle complaints in person. Once they come to them, even if they, and doesn't just have to be necessarily a district police station, they can approach any officer on the street and indicate that they want to file a complaint. And the officer or the supervisor, the officer is required to contact the supervisor, and if a supervisor is not available, the officer is also required to provide a complaint form. And we have policies and procedures in regards to that complaint form to ensure that it gets down to the Public Integrity Bureau also. And our building is located at 2524 Kirk Avenue, which is the former Baltimore Stationery Company Building. We are not very far away from the Clifton Park Golf Course. Next slide, please. So other methods to file a complaint, you know, we have a working relationship with the Civilian Review Board. You know, we are, you know, when a complaint comes through them, they do typically, we, we have a, we have regular contact with them through monthly meetings and whatnot. So that is a more than appropriate way to file a complaint if somebody does not feel comfortable going directly to the Police Department. You can also file complaints through our Facebook and social media page, and Twitter pages, and other social media pages. Our folks down at Public Affairs will forward those complaints to us expeditiously, and as well as through our elected representatives, the Mayor's Office, and other, other organizations. We receive these complaints on a regular basis through those avenues as well. And of course, our Baltimore Police Monitoring Team, they also will forward us complaints that they receive. And I will turn it back over to the Deputy Commissioner.
Thank you, Major. We can go on to the next slide. So what do you expect from BPD when making a complaint? This is something the Police Commissioner and I talk about a lot when I, when I first got here. It's something we talked to the judge about. We want to make sure that there is a, a conduct that is, that is done consistently across the board, and that a complaint, whether or not you're from the public or you're from the department, get treated the same, certainly with respect, and that your, your case is taken seriously. So some of the things that we've changed or reaffirmed along the way is some of the stuff that's on the slide. So PIB receives a high volume of complaints that require full investigations, including complaints from members of the public and complaints submitted internally by BPD members. Each complaint received, received by PIB goes through the same investigative process laid out in our PIB manual, which is available online to everyone. Detectives make efforts to interview all relevant individuals, including the complainants, any witnesses, and the respondents in order to get a complete picture of the incident. All of this adds to the time it takes to investigate complaints. We believe it is important to investigate a complaint thoroughly, even if it increases the time it takes to reach a conclusion, rather than rush through the investigation. All that being said, PIB is making tremendous strides in reducing the amount of time it takes to complete full investigative complaints. In late 2019, it was taken us almost 365 days to complete an investigation. Today, we are averaging around 200 days. Our goal, however, is to get to 90 days, and that's a goal not only of the department, but also a goal of the Consent Decree. The important, the improvement in investigative efficiency isn't due to only one reason, but increased staffing and comprehensive training by PIB detectives have played a significant role. PIB currently has 37 detectives working general misconduct investigations, compared to only 17 in January of 2020. That shows the commitment of this administration to making sure we have staff being available to handle the volume of complaints that we receive. In terms of training, PIB detectives all received a five-day, 40-hour in-person training delivered by an external subject matter expert with decades of internal affairs experience. This was the first IA-specific training that PIB detectives received, conducted, received conducting interrogations, organizational internal investigations, reviewing internal investigations, et cetera. PIB does not require investigative experience as a detective before serving, so the training was crucial in providing the foundation for how these cases and internal affairs should be investigated. In order to achieve lasting change, BPD will continue to increase the staff at PIB. We will implement innovative technology solutions, many of which have already been implemented. We will roll out more streamlined procedures governing internal affairs and invest in existing PIB detectives and our supervisors. Looking at the chart, at the slide, on the first bullet, PIB conducts thorough, unbiased, and consistent investigations. PIB rigorously tests the accuracy and reliability of information from all sources and presents the facts and the findings without regard for personal belief or concerns or personal, professional, or political consequences. It's all based on the facts. Under Bullet Two, the inside investigator shall reach out to the complaint by telephone. Normally, that is a recorded line here at PIB within one business day of being assigned a case. Investigators shall leave a message if there is no answer. The call will serve as an opportunity for the investigator to introduce himself and schedule time in a place convenient and accessible for the complaint to be interviewed. On the third bullet, PIB personnel will send periodic updates to complainants by mail or by email. PIB will be responsive to calls and requests by the complainants to inform complainants as to why, excuse me, it's to provide some requested information if necessary for the complaint. For the fourth bullet, members of the public should expect contact with PIB to be respectful and courteous. PIB investigators will treat all individuals, whether from the public or internally, with dignity and respect and without preference or discrimination. And the last bullet is while PIB will ask as much detail as possible when interviewing a complainant, members of the public should not be required to give more information than they are willing to provide. The next slide shows the process that we use, and it's a very simplistic process for the discussion to show the way when the complaint comes in until the end. The first bullet on the far left is the complaint is received by PIB. Once a plate is received, is analyzed, put into the system with possible allegations which may have been violated, is then signed to an investigator who investigates that, that goes through the process for approval. And then, if there's a sustained finding, it goes to the DRC, which is our Discipline Review Committee. That, that is made up of commanders from the agency who come together once a week to sit to discuss cases and determine based on our matrix what the penalty should be. So they sit, once they made a determination, the information is passed back to the member. So the member has three choices. One choice is, as it says on the, on the right on the top, the discipline is accepted by the member. They can accept the discipline, sign for it, the discipline is, is executed, and the case is over. They may not want to accept the discipline. They may ask for a trial board and then opt to have a negotiation. That negotiation would happen between their attorney and someone from the Solicitor's Office, who is assigned here at PIB. They would have a discussion and determine whether or not a, a settlement was required. And if none of those take place, then it's set for a trial board pursuant currently to LEOPR. The next slide sort of walks through the actual stages of the investigation. That's the longest, the longest phase. And on the slide, it breaks it down into six categories. One is the intake. The second one would be the classification, then an assignment, investigation, a review, and then the discipline. And they all sort of outline the stages along the way. For instance, under intake, it says PIB receives a complaint accusing a BPD member of misconduct. The complaint forms the basis of a case which is signed a number, and then PIB intake creates a digital casebook in IA Pro. That then is sent on to classification, and you can see the three steps of classification, and then down to the assignment, then it gets down to the investigative stage. Once it's finished the investigative stage, it goes through a review process, which is, goes to a sergeant, a lieutenant, a captain, and it may go to the major, and if it involves a member of command, it would go up to my level. And then, of course, the last stage on here is the DRC and the discipline, which shows the DRC and then what you saw on the previous slide. So this is open to be viewed by anyone, and we, of course, put this out to the public as well. And it's also included in our manuals, which are online. Okay, we'll go back to the major to go over a, a new process we've had since the fall of 2019, which is the expedited resolution of minor misconduct. Major?
Thanks, sir. So we spend a lot of time talking about serious misconduct, which obviously there's reasons for us to pay attention to serious misconduct. But there is also a, a large number of cases that comes in that would be considered. But there is also a, a large number of cases that comes in that would be considered to be minor misconduct. And we want to have the best way of possibly dealing with those. You know, both through our policies and, you know, through our esprit de corps with the department. So we wanted our commanders to be more involved in the minor issues that their officers are experiencing. And we believe that we've achieved that through our new ERMM policy. So the policies that are, that the, the charges that are reflected in our ERMM. Policy is loss or damage of equipment, obviously not to include weapons. But we have several incidents where officers will lose some item that is assigned to them. And, and they are typically handled by reimbursing the department for the, the cost of that equipment. Improper uniform or appearance, that is something that can typically be handled by, on the spot by a sergeant or a lieutenant. If it happens to make its way into the system, we can provide the commanders an oper, an opportunity to resolve that on their level as well. Allowing unauthorized persons to use departmental equipment. Improper maintenance of firearms, improper inspection of their vehicles. Being off post or leaving their assignment without permission. Being late for work, not appearing in court, not appearing at training, not attending their medical appointments that are scheduled. Being absent without leave, those officers who. You know, did not put it in a vacation day, they said they put one in, but they didn't put one in, that can be handled on the command level. And discourtesy, not to include any allegation that involves a member of the public. So basically, officers being discourteous to one another or other members of the department. So next slide, please. So this is the flow chart of how that all works, which. I mean, the, the flow chart speaks for itself, but basically what we did here, which is different than from what happened in years prior. When we had the command discipline system is the responsibility of the Public Integrity Bureau is not removed. Even though we are allowing the, the officer or the commanders to handle these complaints. And the other thing that's different than years past is that this is only for complaints that the officer. Agrees that he or she did commit the infraction. So somebody's late for work, you know, they agree that they're late for work. The commander says that we're gonna have, we're, you know, you're late for work and this is gonna be the punishment for being late to work. And the officer agrees with it. If any of that doesn't work, we will send the case back down to the Public Integrity Bureau and we will conduct an investigation. And we will process it through as we would any other case. But this provides us, this provides the command of a better opportunity. To see what the minor misconduct is that their offices are doing and dealing with it. It keeps the responsibility with the Public Integrity Bureau. And it allows us to focus on more serious cases by reducing our caseload slightly by, by sending some of these minor cases elsewhere. And with that, next slide, please, and I will turn it over to Director Sullivan.
Good afternoon. So again, I'm Shannon Sullivan, I'm the Director of the Consent Decree Implementation Unit at the Baltimore Police Department. And one of the main jobs of our unit is to draft policy, whether it's consent related or not. And so what Major Callahan and DC NATO were talking a lot about is. Processes in place that have been a part of our PIB Internal Operations and Training Manual. It is a very large document on the website, anyone can look at it. In fact, when we were drafting it, we drafted it right alongside the Department of Justice members of the monitoring team, and it went out for a public comment for review. So that document and all of the things that were sort of described before that is laid out in that document, think of it as a SOP. We also have our General Disciplinary Process Policy and Policy Three Ten, which is really. I think when most people think of it, they think of the disciplinary matrix, which I will talk a little bit more about later, as well as a couple other policies. But that's currently right, what guides our disciplinary system, everything from the complaint intake. All the way through to the disciplinary process, and all of these are available on the website. And then I think I now pass it on to perhaps the DC.
Thank you, Director. So we kind of want to go through some of the processes that have changed, and it says past the president, this is really since this administration's been here. Would be, prior to that would be the past and today would be the present. So we've moved to an all electronic case file system. Beforehand, all the cases were paper, right, they were in binders, they were everywhere. So if a complaint came in, whether or not it was an internal complaint or external complaint, they provided their, their complaint, it would get written up. That eventually would make it into a binder and would be somewhere in this building. It would make it really challenging to be able to keep a dialogue going with the complainant to make sure that things were progressing effectively. It was not possible for. It was not possible for anybody in management here to quickly find a case, find out what the status was. We really want to make sure that we were interacting with the public or the complaint as much as possible. So we changed that to an all electronic system that allows, at, at a moment's notice, either myself, the captain, the major, lieutenant. To go into the system and find a case, find out exactly where it is, where it is in the system and what's been done on the case. So that was, that's been extreme help to us to be able to track cases and move along much more quickly. In addition to electronic case files, every detective now has two computer screens for increased efficiency. Performance review boards are now conducted remotely and trial boards can be here for remote capabilities. What that means is we have updated all of the electronic equipment here, all of our, all of our computers. When, when this administration got here were Windows Seven and prior. They were very slow, it took forever to do a case because it was almost impossible to get the computer to, to load up. If multiple people were in IA Pro at one time, it would be slowed down. We've doubled the size of the servers, we've got new technology, really from our top, our new IT division downtown. So that all the detectives have a really quick technology that works fast so they can move forward. And when they're interviewing somebody, they can be inputted immediately and not have to do hand notes and then later put it into the system. So it's really made a much more efficient process. And also PRB, which is our performance review boards. We are able now to, we do a performance review board on almost every level three that happens in this agency. And it really incorporates not only people from my CERT team, it also incorporates people from the consent, consent decree. Communications, ENT, like almost every asset of the agency. And now because of the new equipment we've put in, we're able to do those remotely, show videos, have discussion, open discussion. And have everybody really participate, so we get a better outcome at the end. So it's been very, very appropriate for us. And then trial boards, which we hold here, they used to be held in various locations, they were held up at. The old ENT, they're sometimes were held at City Hall, sometimes at headquarters. We would lose the location because of double booking. As you all know, downtown is very challenging to park. So we moved those up here, we built a trial board area so that we have all our trial boards are held here. And all members of my PIB staff can watch the trial boards for educational purposes. You'd be able to watch the process to make sure that they see what's going on in a trial board, what some of the concerns or questions to make them better at their job. And a lot of them take advantage of that. More individuals are now applying for PIB. Back in, before this administration postings for PIB would yield about three applicants. Not always the, the most qualified applicants, our latest posting at twenty-eight, we've been constantly. Since this administration beginning anywhere from twelve to twenty-eight applicants for every posting. A latest sergeant application we just put out or posting a yield of twelve, twelve sergeant posting, which is a record for us. So it started to show that I think people in this agency are starting to see the reforms, the positive side of those. And why it's extremely important to be part of the process. And a lot of them are applying to come over here. I will say of the applicants we get. You know, probably at least, you know, seventy, eighty percent of those applicants are highly qualified people. And all the ones that we've taken, you know, have turned out to be very successful, so we're very happy about that. One hundred percent of our detectives have taken the specialized training. I mentioned before, we actually hired an outside SME to come in and do the training. There was a forty, he did thirty, thirty-two hour block, solicitors obviously did an eight hour block. We actually use our IT division to come in and actually videotape the entire presentations. Now, anyone who gets assigned to PIB actually has to go through and take the forty-hour block of training. They do that alongside with either a senior detective or sergeant in case there's questions that come up. But it gives everybody a good baseline. As you can imagine, doing investigations of PIB is not quite the same as doing investigation on the street. You're dealing with members of your own agency for the most part. And we want to make sure that they get the basic guidelines down of how to do that. And of course, we marry them up with a seasoned detective for even additional training. Cases are completed more quickly and more efficiently, a lot of that has to do with the fact that now they're electronic. Obviously, we have more detectives now, so the process does go quicker. As I said, we're down to about two hundred days, the goal is to get down to ninety days. The PIB manual outs all relevant SOPs, including those that involve the CRB all into one place. So there's no more, you know, going to a training manual, an SOP, et cetera, to find out how to do cases. Everybody that comes here is provided the link to the PIB manual. They can go through, read it, it gives you step-by-step, almost step-by-step guidelines of how to do a case, what to make sure you're doing. And a lot of that has to do with focusing on treating the individual with respect, taking all the information. And only making decisions based on evidence, right? Not based on your other personal knowledge, not based on your prior interactions, what district somebody is from, et cetera. It's based on fact, fact-based only. And then EODS, which is our Equal Opportunity Diversity Section, we're gonna talk about that a little more in a couple of slides. But that actually, in this agency, used to be under HR. When I first came here, you know, I spoke to the commission about it, we felt as well as it was in the concentric actually. That it needed to be moved under the Public Integrity Bureau. And so that has now been moved under the Public Integrity Bureau, and we'll get more into that in a couple of slides. To talk about some of the policies, I'll turn it back over to Director Sullivan.
Deputy NATO, I, I want to ask if we could actually move down to slide twenty-nine and get to some of the data. I, I think there's a significant interest around some of that stuff. And I want to give folks an opportunity to ask questions as well.
Certainly, it's like twenty-nine, are you talking about the eternal complaint numbers?
Not this one, the next one, there we go. You can go up to twenty-nine and start there. There we go, yes, that's perfect.
Just, just if I could just interject just for a moment, the slides that we fast forwarded, they are relevant. You know, the, the complaint that we're, or the whole hearing is designed to see what we're doing in this bureau. And whether or not we are allowing folks to be treated unfairly and inequitably. And all of this work that we described in these slides. Contribute to where we are today. Are we perfect? No, but we have moved heaven and earth to improve greatly. And, and some of the things, so we talk a, a great deal about those in those other slides, we're happy to, to circle back. If any of the council members have questions, either during the hearing or, or, or after.
Thank you, Director, and I understand we, we received all the slides in advance. And so folks, if you have any questions about the section that we skipped over, please feel free to speak up. We're, we're more than willing to go back to that, I just want to make sure that we, we get to some of the immediate issues and have an opportunity for folks to ask questions as we move along. Thank you. Actually, I'll. Solicit any questions if there any exist at the moment about what we've discussed thus far. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. I. I have a couple of questions. One is your facility at Kirk Avenue is in my district, I'm glad you could be there. I don't think we know anything about what's going on there. We know that it's still owned by Cloverland, which is next door. And I've had some complaints about, this has nothing to do with the police piece, but I've had some complaints about the. Maintenance of the area, and we can talk about that later. But could you tell us what specifically happens at that facility?
Sure, and we're glad to be in your district, and please stop by anytime when we can give you a tour of the facility. So all of the Public Integrity Bureau assets reside here at Kirk Avenue. So we have our CERT team, which is here, they're on our second floor. We have an ethics unit, which does primarily criminal cases, investigations against police officers, they're also here. EODS, which we didn't get to before, but EODS is the Equal, Equal Opportunity Diversity Section that used to be under HR. Last July first, we moved it here. When we moved it here, it had a sergeant that was on her way out of the unit and two detectives. What we did is we hired a brand-new director who's on here, Director Olafamia Kandi, who came from the state. Came on to be the director, has taken over that program, has increased that program to, it will be six detectives, a new sergeant in himself. And they deal with all EODS complaints internally and also from the federal EOC. So they are also here. We also have the investigative, investigative section, which I mentioned before, currently has thirty-seven detectives. Before it had seventeen, they take internal, external complaints, and then we have an admin section that runs our. Admin section in OAH, which is our Office of Administrative Hearings, if somebody wants a trial board. So what happens here is we take complaints here in a multitude of ways, right? The public can come here, it's a posted location, the public can show up here, we have a front desk person that would greet them. And then they would be set up with a person to actually take the complaint here. A complaint may come in through any member of the agency, can go into our blue team system and file a complaint. That would come into our admin section who would review it. Or it could come in through a website, we have an online website, you could file a complaint. That would come in through also into our admin section. However, the complaint gets here, our admin section is responsible for reviewing the complaint, all of those complaints. They're not vetted, they're not sent back, they're not dismissed, all of those complaints have to go into the system. And so they all get put into the system, and then it goes to a classification supervisor. That supervisor reads the complaint and then tags the complaint with possible allegations, right? Could be discourtesy, could be body worn camera, could be use of force, whatever the classification is. That they think, just by reading the complaint, they tag it with one, two, three, whatever the possible allegations could be. The purpose of them doing that is so now they know where it's going to go. So if it's a, it's a criminal case, it's going to go to, depending on what the case is, it might go to our ethics group. Or it might go to one of our three squads that do serious misconduct investigations. If it's a body worn camera violation or something more minor, it might go to squads one or two, which do minor misconduct cases. So the reason, so they tag it, the classification, they then send it to the detect, the lieutenant who oversees those. Those units, and then they review it, and then they assign it to a detective based on caseload. What they also do is check the system to make sure that we don't always have the complaint, because it does happen. Where somebody may file a complaint by email. They may show up here and file a complaint, and/or they may go to a district and file a complaint. So what we don't want to do is, which happens, happened historically, is have three complaints open on the same violation. So they check to make sure this is not a complaint. So then they investigate the complaint, so it's assigned to somebody, they actually do the investigation. What they do is they serve the officer, notice of the investigation, and then they coordinate that. So once they've interviewed the witness, any other witnesses that may be relevant, they then interview the officer. Officer can be represented by their attorney, the attorney there is there to listen. They do the interview, all of these are recorded, they do the interview. And then they go from that, you know, they take the body worn camera, if there is body worn camera, they take all the evidence, they review it all. They meet with the sergeant, and then they talk to somebody from legal. We have four people from the solicitor's office that are assigned here. Right now, they're working remotely, but they come here occasionally. They meet with them, they discuss it and determine whether or not there's any additional investigation to be done. Whether the investigation as done meets one of the four categories. That is either it's sustained, meaning that there's enough evidence to believe that a person violated a policy, and if so, what was that policy? It might be not sustained, which means there's not enough evidence. And based on a review, regardless of what we did, we wouldn't be able to prove one way or another that it happened. So it could be not sustained. It could be exonerated, which means they've looked at it. It actually happened, but the member was actually in the right position to do it. For instance, sometimes there's a use of force, but upon review, it's, we find that it's legally justified and doesn't violate a policy. So that would be exonerated, or it's unfounded, right? Somebody made a complaint against somebody, and the person was in Florida. It couldn't possibly have done it. You know, it's completely unfounded. So it could be unfounded. So it gets tagged as one of those four. If it is a sustained complaint, once it's finished with solicitor's office and they do a charging document, right? It's no different than if you were sent to court, you'd have a citation to appear. There's a charging document. That charging document, which has the outline of what the facts are, then goes to what we call the DRC, which is the Display Review Committee. That DRC is made up of members outside of here. We have one of our captains here oversees it, but the other members are from outside of PIB. They come in independent, have no knowledge. They then review the case and the charging document and decide, yeah, we agree with it. And if we agree with it, what is the penalty? They do the penalty based on the matrix. So then they look at the matrix based on the allegation, what the charging document says, based on their history. When I say history, history of complaints, sustained complaints. They look at it and then they make a determination what the penalty is. Once they finish that, it then goes to OAH, which is the Office of Administrative Hearings. They then serve the member and say, here's the charging document, here's the penalty. And then the person either says, I accept it, or I don't accept it. If they don't accept it, we send a copy to the attorney. They review it. They have a discussion with solicitor's office. If they don't come up to some agreement, then it gets moved to a trial board. And then we have the trial boards here at PIB. Trial boards, as you know, I've talked about these before, are made up of three members of the agency and then two civilians. And we are the only agency in the state that has civilians on our trial boards. That law has been in effect for almost five years, and we are still the only agency that does it. So we have a trial board here, and then after the trial board, the trial board findings is the finale. So that's what happens here. It's very, it's very busy because there's a lot of cases coming in. And, you know, the cases don't always come in at once, right? They're in motion. So if you were here right now and walked out on my, walked out into the, we call it the pit, you would see, you know, either attorneys coming in with their clients to be interviewed. You might see complainants in another interview room providing information. You might see witnesses being interviewed, or people are at their desk writing, watching body worn camera to make an assessment of what's on the body worn camera, linking that all into our IA Pro system, which is our database for which we hold all misconduct investigations, which is pretty much across the nation. The number one database system, all that stuff feeds into that system. And then we have sergeants that are reviewing the cases, lieutenants that are having oversight. And then, so the process continues. So every day, that is what happens pretty much all day long, trying to keep these cases going. And as mentioned before, you know, even though LEOBR gave us three hundred and sixty five days to do a case, you know, that's sort of outrageous, right? If we have a complaint, whether it's a police officer or a citizen who's complaining about conduct, telling them a year later, the outcome, you know, to me is just.
No, I appreciate that, and I certainly will take you up on your offer to visit. And it sounds like there's a lot going on there. There's always cars there. There's always people going in and out. So I appreciate it.
Can we, is this question going to be relevant to the piece that we skipped over or that we discussed before? Or can we put it at the end and let?
I'm happy to wait till the end for my other questions, or I can ask them later offline. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Deputy Commissioner, you can continue with the presentation.
Okay, so you want us to start at the section we're at right now, sir?
We can start at the data if you'd like, so maybe thirty one.
So I will say before you turn that, Michelle, the data, if you go back two more slides. We do publish, you know, we're all about transparency, right? We publish, and it is a concentric requirement, but it is something we fully support. We do publish all of this information about our complaints on our PIB website. And so far, the first one we published was my first quarter here, which was quarter two thousand nineteen. That one was completed and published. It has all the data, breaks down by geographic race, sex, Clayton versus officer, that's all in that very lengthy document. And then we did the two thousand twenty ones. We published it two thousand twenty one for quarter one and two, quarter three and four are just about ready to almost finalized review by DOJ. That will be published as well. So any of this data is on our website, it's available to the entire public to look at. And it is, it is, you know, very useful to look at. So it is on the website available. So if we go forth, two more slides. So we broke this down by internal complaints and by external complaints. And so what this shows is this is the data from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty one. And it breaks it down by officer, by race. And then if you go across, it shows number of allegations. So let me just say what the difference is between number of allegations and the thing, the line or the two lines above which says total incidents received. So an incident is a complaintant, internal external, doesn't matter, comes in and says, hey, I have a complaint. Okay, that generates an incident. Allegation is the number of allegations that the classification people tag as possible violations, right? So if they look at something and the person comes in and says, hey, I want to complain, an officer was rude to me. All right, that might just get tagged as discourtesy. But if they come in and say, hey, the officer illegally arrested me and was rude to me, that would get tagged as, you know, is it illegal arrest and discourtesy? That would be two. So if you look at the bottom, you'll see it says two zero three one, but up top it says thirteen sixty three. That's why there's a difference in those numbers, right? So thirteen sixty three was the number of cases or the number of incidents. Three, two thousand thirty one was the number of allegations. So what we broke this down, and sometimes also they come in and complain about, you know, as a, an event which may have one, two, three, four members. And all those members may not be of the same race. So when we broke this out, and I could say we can break this out now better based on new software we have. It's a, it's a IA Pro Next Gen, which has made it easier to pull reports. So now we can pull it out by race. So when you look that through, you see number of allegations, those are broken down by race. This is the period of time, two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty one. The next four boxes to the right show unfounded, which I explained a little bit ago, not sustained, sustained and exonerated. So this sort of shows by allegation and by race, what the findings were of the case when it was concluded here within investigation. So we did the same thing for internal, and the next slide shows the exact same format for external. Again, I would just caution that that number sixteen thirty six is external. The number at the bottom is like thirty eight, eleven. The difference is the number of allegations. So if anybody has any questions about any of those, I could be more than happy to tackle that. I will say nowhere in our system, when we do any case, does it show this data. This data is uploaded behind the scenes into our IA Pro system by HR. When people are hired, it is uploaded to the system. Some of the numbers that if you go to the quarterly reports, if they don't match up a hundred percent, it's because the quarterly report also includes unknown officers, where this report doesn't, because if it's an unknown officer, we don't know the race. But in the quarterly report, we do report unknown officer complaints. So it's taken out of here because we don't know what the race is, and this is really based more on the race of the officers. So I just give you that enough information in case you're looking at the quarterly reports. But does anybody have any questions about any of these?
This, is this the last slide? Is there another?
External is the last slide, yes.
Okay, I think you can take down the presentation. We're going to open the floor to questions. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over first to the sponsor, Councilman Burnett, and then Councilman Ramos, since you have additional questions. So we'll start in that order. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the force. So first, we just, I would like to submit a data, additional data request. Because ahead of the hearing, we asked that, not only for the information that you provided in the presentation, but we also were looking for a breakdown, including demographic information of complaints and disciplinary practices and outcomes for various ranks within BPD for the last three years by race, gender, by district, by patrol versus specialized units. And we only received a portion of that data, so I'll resubmit it, Mr. Chair, in writing on behalf of the committee, so that we can sort of get a more long term view and a little bit more detailed view over the last few years of the same information. But we'll put that in writing, and I'll copy the committee members. So the data that was provided to us is a little bit alarming. From an external standpoint, you have one thousand seven hundred and forty eight complaints for white officers with eight hundred and thirty of those complaints unfounded, meaning that the investigator could not determine whether or not the officer engaged in inappropriate practice outside of the scope of their position. Yet for internal complaints, officers who are black have a significantly higher rate of allegations against them. And one of the reasons we requested this data set, that the Cypher's district level complaints versus internal affairs complaints is to see the bigger picture of what types of complaints or actions are being made against officers of color versus their white counterparts. And so the first question I had is, what policies does BPD have when reviewing the disciplinary process from a bird's eye view to ensure that policies are being enforced across the board and that offices of officers of color are not being targeted by petty complaints, such as showing up for late or warnings versus formal complaints, et cetera?
So, Councilman, one correction on your definition. So unfounded, that is not the definition of unfounded. Unfounded means that the allegation, not that we, not that you did it and you weren't in violation, it just never happened, right? So we don't have, you know, so somebody made a complaint about discourtesy, and we watched the body worn camera, and you weren't discourteous, you weren't, you didn't show any, you know, you acted professionally, that would be unfounded. If we can't prove it, because we don't have the evidence, that would be a not sustained. So if you look at those numbers you're talking about, I mean, ratio wise, they're actually almost probably identical. I'm just, I mean, I don't have the, I could do the math, I just do it in my head. But if you look at, let's say on the external complaints, white officers allegations, not complaints, allegations, seventeen forty eight, sustained two seventy two. That is a fifteen percent, fifteen percent rate of sustained. And on African American officers of two ninety two, by sixteen forty one is seventeen percent. I mean, nearly identical.
I mean, I think having the additional definition is helpful. Do you look at this from a, this is a quick follow up on this, relative to the number of officers, because it still stood out to me as being a little bit more disproportionate than that, considering that the majority of the force is an African American?
So if your question is the fact that there is seventeen hundred and forty eight allegations against white or Caucasian in sixteen forty one against black or American officers? I mean, these are external complaints. I can't control what the public complains about. So if the public comes here and complains, whether or not they come here complaining about an Asian officer, a white officer, a heavyset officer, a thin officer, you know, we have no, we have no control. All complaints, regardless of what it is, all complaints go into the system and get investigated. Some of those complaints, unfortunately, you know, we've had people show up here who complained, and when you find out it didn't happen, they're like, well, my attorney sent me here to complain. You know, some of those complaints, we know from the beginning are false. Like people come here and say, you know, I was, you know, X, Y, Z by an officer, you know, here. We know the officer doesn't even work here. I mean, we do get those complaints. Not a majority, but we do get some. But I just say that because all those plates, even those ones, go into the system. And if we can identify the officer, whether or not they did it or not, if we can identify the officer and the data is in HR, it will pull, it'll pull the data, and that's how we have this. We don't input this, right? If somebody comes in and complains about Officer Smith, and they tell us where the officer works, we don't go, we don't pull it up to see, well, what do they look like? We input, you know, their date of birth, race, height, weight, none of that goes into the system. That's all behind the scenes. So, you know, my detectives, unless they happen to know who the person is, doesn't know that either. Now, when they come in for an interview, obviously they see it, but they don't know it. That's not information that we enter in. It's behind the scenes pulled. I would say, you know, sixty percent of BPD is minority. So I don't know if these numbers are really showing you what you're looking at, but I think you're going by the unfounded, which, you know, really, the hard number here is the sustained, because those are the allegations that actually we filed, the person, that the person actually did violate at least one allegation. It could be two, but at least one.
Yeah, I mean, we're absolutely looking at the disparity in unfounded allegations. And it would sort of align with what we were hearing among officers themselves. So it's potential that, you know, the information that we, or the complaints that we've received is that maybe they feel targeted, rather the outcome of the investigation shows that they, you know, I think that the overall, I think what we're hearing is reflective of the data in that if people feel targeted by race, and the numbers are showing that there is a higher number of investigations, even though there, you know, obviously, I do appreciate the distinction between unfounded and sustained. I think it does sort of lift that up. The second question I had, I did hear your point on that.
Yeah. So your second point was about the retaliation. We take that very strongly, retaliation. And any retaliation complaint that comes in is moved directly to our EODS section, which is overseen by Director Akani. We have had some retaliation complaints filed. We also get complaints that get filed with the federal EOC that get shipped over to his group and for him personally to look at. So I would like to go to Director Akani for a second to talk about that process, because we take that very seriously. That is one reason why the commissioner and I wanted EODS to come over here to be taken seriously, not sit under HR where it was, you know, in amongst a lot of other things happening. And he has built that unit up with the support of myself and the PC to make it effective. And so he is on here, and I would like to just talk just briefly about the process and what he's seeing, because we do get those complaints. You are correct. And they get looked at very quickly and seriously by his team in the federal EOC. So Director Akani, if you could just, I don't see you on my screen, but I know you're there.
Good afternoon. Yes. Mr. Chair and council members, good afternoon. And I just want to talk a little bit about what some of the things that DC NATO has said and with respect to what you've said, Councilman Bernard. So yes, we do receive this kind of complaints, but they, what happens is, in terms of internal complaints about this kind of situations that you've described, where it's based off race, we haven't really gotten those kind of complaints directly from members coming to us. However, they have gone to the federal EOC to file this kind of complaints. And what I do is, in the process of receiving those kind of complaints from the federal EOC, I review the allegations. I speak to members that have been named in the allegations. And for the most part, you know, another thing that I might add on what you said is not only with respect to race, actually. Sometimes we receive complaints about people saying, you know, they're being treated differently because of age, because of sex, you know, whether it be sexual orientation or pregnancy. So something that you alluded to promotion, you know, but what we found out again is with respect to discipline, most of these members do not have the facts of what they're talking about. So say a member is served with notification for investigation of making a false allegation. And once that member receives that notification, they inform other members in their district, like, you know, I'm being investigated for this allegation. At the end of the day, when PIB conducts its investigation, PIB might determine that the member in fact did not, you know, violate BPD policy by making any false statement or making a false report. But maybe the member did violate some other policy, maybe by turning off their body. But maybe the member did violate some other policy, maybe by turning off their body one camera, which of course, in terms of the disciplinary metrics, is a lighter punishment compared to making a false statement. Now, what happens is, when the investigation is conducted and that member is given, say, the lighter punishment, because of course, again, BPD didn't find for false statement, but for body one camera. Another member who is alleged to have made false statement and is, investigation is conducted and is found to have in fact made that false statement and the, you know, or the DRC recommends termination and they elect to go to a trial board and they eventually terminated. What those members come back to say is, well, such and such officer was also charged for a false statement, but they were not terminated, you know, and it's because they are Caucasian officers. I admit, you know, whether or not I made a false statement is neither here nor there, but why am I giving a more stringent punishment than my, you know, white counterpart? So that is what the investigation has found in most of these in most of these allegations that have made to the federal EOC. You know, I found that they are not similarly situated officers, either it be with respect to rank or the allegation itself. And, you know, that the discipline that they receive was actually appropriate and the people that they're comparing themselves to actually did not violate BPD policy, the same policy that they alluded to. So that has been actually what I've seen across the board. And like I said, it's not only with respect to race, it's with respect to sex, age, you know, promotion and different areas. And also, we've had even Caucasian officers complain about the same thing when it had to do with African-American officers or minority officers.
So, thank you. I appreciate the clarity here. This is all really helpful context. To follow up on that, so looking at this data, if there have been trends of different outcomes based on race, what role does the equity officer within the department or other command staff do to combat racial bias and review recommendations of the panel members? And so essentially, like, if, you know, again, I do appreciate the breakdown for us on unfounded versus, you know, the sustained piece. What measures are in place if those trends were to show more stark differences?
So, so that's a complicated question, because again, we, you know, we don't, we here don't file the complaints. But we do look at this stuff, which is why we do the quarterly reports, which is why we send out the quarterly reports to the public, because we want them to see the trends that we have and the transparency. I mean, in this agency, you know, the disparity between African-American officers and white officers is like 2%. Like, it's 41% African-American, 43% white. It's not a huge difference. So, but we do look at this stuff, but we have a retaliation policy, which I believe is, and I'm going to ask you, 1729? 1729, policy 1729, which is a termination offense. So if you violate, if you retaliate against somebody and it's proven that you retaliated against somebody, there's a really good chance you're getting terminated from this agency. It is a no tolerance with this administration on retaliation. So have we had any of those? No. Have we had allegations of those? Yes. Have they been investigated? And the answer would be no. So sometimes, you know, people find retaliation is, well, they're making me do my work, you know, therefore that's retaliation. It's not necessarily retaliation, it's just they're making you do your work. So, you know, those cases get looked at very closely by Director Akani's group to make sure and get all the facts and interview multitude of people to find out what's going on and look at history, pull reports, et cetera, to find out what's going on. So if it was found that that was actually true and somebody was sustained for that, one, if it's a commander or above, that's a decision between the Commissioner and I, which I can assure you, the answer would be termination. If it was a lieutenant or below, it would go to the DRC and certainly the DRC most likely do termination as well. So there is a zero tolerance for retaliation. Now, if there's people that feel they're being retaliated and they didn't tell anybody, I mean, I can't really, can't really speak to, you know, what happened before this administration. But if that happened in the past or they felt they were, they didn't want to report it because they didn't want to be retaliated against, I mean, that's unfortunate. But we go out and again, with the number of people applying to come here because they see the work that's being done, the federal judge, you know, we have to go report to him, DOJ, we have to report to them. They review our cases, et cetera. So they're being done fairly and appropriately now and they're not based on, you know, any protected class. Again, as I said before, we don't even have that information. So we do take it very seriously, which is why, you know, we not only brought EODS over here, you know, I moved to get a director position for that because of the importance that we should see that as an agency. Before, it only had a sergeant. We skipped past a lieutenant, now we have a director. So it's very important, we take it very seriously and the director knows, you know, we have discussions on the cases that come in, when they come in, when they've done their case, he briefs us on them. And we, you know, fully support the work that his team is doing.
So if I may add also, I know you questioned about what the role of the equity officer because of the numbers that you, you know, you talked about. So the equity officer has a sitting responsibility on the DRC. Now, the equity officer does not vote on the DRC, but these are issues that the equity officer has to bring to the attention of members of the DRC. Should he find any kind of disparate, you know, treatment in the way that discipline is being handed over to members of the department who violate, you know, either the law of BPD policy? And that is also the same when it comes to promotions as well, you know. The equity officer sits on the promotion committee and the reason for this is to guide the committee as well, to make sure that BPD's practices, you know, promote fairness, equality, equity among all its members. So that's something that, you know, BPD itself has recognized and has taken an action on and continues to take actions on.
And if I could just add one more thing to that, the equity officer had found that there was a disparity in terms of promoting folks to sergeant, lieutenant. There used to be what was called the rule of five that mandated that the commissioner promote the top five, the persons with the top five scores on the written exams for sergeant and lieutenant. Not everybody tests well. I don't test well, you know. But, and they weren't necessarily allowed to look at all of the other things that those folks were applying, you know, were contributing to the, both to the department and to the community that they serve. And so the equity officer came to the executive team and said, look, we have got to go to the state, we've got to change this law so that we can have a wider pool of folks to promote to these ranks. And we did that and we were successful. And so I just wanted to give you, you know, kind of an idea of how we take that advice and actually use it to better the department.
Got it. Okay, I had more questions, Mr. Chair. I can hold off for the next round because I know others had some as well.
Yes, we're going to hold off and come back to you. I'd like to add a couple of requests that I think I can coordinate with Councilman Burnett on. I think it'd be helpful to get some firm numbers of the breakdown of the department by race. I think DC Nato, you said it's roughly 60% people of color. I think that'd be helpful in understanding how often we're seeing complaints and then also amongst that complaint process, how many of those are sustained, unfounded and otherwise. We have some of those numbers, but the breakdown of the department by race would be helpful for the context.
Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt you, I just want to just make sure, I'm taking notes, but just to make sure nothing falls through the cracks, will council staff send the request in writing? I just, I don't want to get it wrong, I don't want to lose it.
We're going to, we're going to send it in writing with the same requests as Councilman Burnett, just so you have it all in place.
Thank you, sir.
An additional request would be a breakdown of complaints by location or by district to understand if we're seeing certain districts have more complaints, understanding why. And I think it'll be also helpful to understand if there is a, you know, more focus of color in those districts, if that has any play on that matter. I don't know if that's available, but please do let me know if that's too much to ask. And then I'm really curious if we have data on punishments from sustained cases to see how those punishments shake out so that we can make sure that there is fairness in sentencing, for lack of a better word, for those sustained cases. And if you don't mind, I'll actually throw in a question. I'm really curious along the lines of sustained cases, what role does precedence, previous cases? What role does that have in determining what punishments the department chooses?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So the DRC, which is the disciplinary review committee, can take into account prior, you know, sustained bad acts by a member and what their penalty was. Usually, it has to be, you know, somewhat in the same realm of category. So let's say you had two body one camera violations and, you know, now you had a use of force violations, those aren't really in the same category. If you had discourtesy before, you have discourtesy again, you have a third discourtesy that does. So they are open to take into account any of the, anything from the past that is sustained. And they can, by doing that, they can move up on the matrix if they so choose for a higher penalty. So usually what it comes out to is there's a category, right? It's either a category A through F. If they determine it's a category, you know, B, there's a range of category B. If there's prior bad acts, they may give a higher range. If there's no prior bad acts, they may give a lower range. So they can take it into account. Most notably, they take it into account when it's the same type of violation.
Got it. Thank you for explaining that. I want to hand off to Councilman.
I just mentioned one thing, Chairman, your request, I think the district one we can pull because that, I think, is in our quarterly reports that are published online, so I think we do pull that one. The other one, that is more of a manual pull, only because the way the system's set up, it goes in as a document, it gets scanned in, so it's not in a dropdown field. Now, we're starting to put them in a dropdown field, but historical data is not. So I believe that would be a manual pull. I will say, we just hired a research analyst that I've been trying to get here for a year. We finally, we finally have one. He's starting next Monday. He's going to help us develop a process, which I want, which is to look at districts, supervisors, members, commanders, to see where complaints are coming from, so we can target areas where we see a lot of problems, like why are there problems in, let's just say, you know, the Northeast? Why is there a problem in this shift, right? And so we can see that quickly. Right now, we don't have the ability to see that, we need to build programs for that. So we had started to build that once before, the analyst that had the job went on to another job, so she left. We just got one, he's starting next week, so hopefully, we're going to be able to build that as well, because what I say is, we have a lot of data here, we should use it to our best advantage, right? We should look at and fix problems before they happen. Training sometimes, having people understand policy is much easier and better bang for this agency in the long run than just letting it happen and reacting to it, right? We should be out in the forefront of that and that's what this new research analyst is going to help us do.
I couldn't agree more, Deputy Commissioner. I appreciate you guys stepping up and figuring out ways to be more innovative with the data that you have. And what you brought up was another one of my questions that I was going to get to later. I want to hand off to Councilwoman Ramos, she's been waiting patiently.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one other thing before we go to the councilwoman? If you pull up the most recent report in court, in Appendix B, it has the breakdown by district, by unit, and also breaks it down by internal and external. And if you flip backwards a bit, it will give you a breakdown of penalties or, you know, the actual discipline that was rendered per quarter and also broken down internal, external. Just, I just want to let you know, and if you need me to send those links to the committee directly, I can certainly do that.
That would be really helpful. And I'm curious, is that a breakdown between all data or district level commander data versus internal data? How's that matrix break out? Actually, send it to me.
I will send it to you. I don't see it broken down by rank, that may be something that is very difficult to do. But this data is broken out in a couple of different ways that I think that you will find very helpful. I will send it now. I'll send it to the whole committee right now.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if we have the difference between like minor infractions versus serious infractions. I don't know if there's a delineation between the two, but that would be really helpful. I'll look forward to your email. Councilman Ramos, thank you for being patient.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, I'm going to ask about all the data that you had requested, because, you know, it would be helpful to know out of all of the the percentage of African-Americans or Latinos in this department and then how it breaks down with the, so that, I'm glad that you asked that question. My question is about when when in this process does an appeals process happen or the state's attorney gets involved? Because one of the things that I had been hearing is that there seems to be a morale issue if there's other parties involved in those cases. And so I'm, I don't know all the specifics, so that's why my question is broad. I'm just trying to understand like where state attorney comes in or if, you know, that kind of thing.
Sure, that's a great question, because it comes up to us a lot from members who ask us the same question, we explain it to them too. So any allegation that comes in, any allegation comes in, once a week, the entire list of all the complaints gets sent to the state's attorney's office. They review it and then sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, but most often times, they let us know whether or not they're going to look into it. So if we get a complaint during the week that we know the complaint is criminal, so let's say we get a complaint of an officer, you know, I'll just use something far-fetched, well, hopefully it's far-fetched, robbed a bank. And so we get the complaint, right? We know that's criminal, right? So we immediately notify the state's attorney's office, hey, we just got a complaint, officer ABC, you know, robbed a bank. We put it in our system, of course, we send it over there and we start working on it immediately with the state's attorney's office. What that does is, it allows them to work a case criminally. What we don't normally do at that point is interview the officer, because we don't want to have a compelled statement until they've sort of got down their road along with the evidence of whether or not they think it's a viable complaint or not. Now, if they opt to charge somebody and they lay a charging document on somebody, at that point, we are required then to cease any trial board process. So we could finish the case, we could send it to the DRC, but we can't do anything with it at that point. We have to wait until the, whatever charging documents been laid by state's attorney's office has been finished. Either they found guilty, not guilty, case dropped, et cetera. If, while we're waiting for the state's attorney's office, we look at the case and we see that it's either taking a long time, because sometimes it does, or we don't see that there's really a criminal aspect to it. You know, we do have the opportunity, if we want to, to move forward on the case. The problem becomes that the state's attorney's office, it then decides to charge, we can't have the same detective, because they have been privy to a compelled statement, which, under the law, we can't use and, you know, would taint the investigation. So the major and I look at those cases and make a decision whether or not we think the case should move forward, even though the state's attorney's office is still working on the case. Under the statute, if they're working on the case, our one-year statute limitations does not start until they give us a declination letter. So I'm sure some of the complaints you may hear is it takes a long time. Sometimes state's attorney's office gives us a declination letter in a month, sometimes it's a year, sometimes it's two years. And so it does drag it out. We are very aware of the problem. We work with them, we send them a list of the cases we have, we get their feedback on them. You know, our perfect scenario would be for us to do the cases immediately. I will say, under the new statute that starts in July, we no longer have to, even if there's a charge by the state's attorney's office, we can still move forward. Because what I always say is, why do we have somebody working here who is going to most likely be terminated? And we're waiting for the state's attorney's office, like, the agency should be able to move forward and terminate somebody. Now, it is a bit of a balance, right? Because you're dealing, you don't want to interrupt the criminal investigation. And if they decide to charge, and sometimes when you get multiple people giving witness statements, some to us, some to them, if those statements should contradict each other, you know, it could have a negative impact on a prosecution. So it's something we work out, we work with them on to make sure that we're on the same sheet of music moving forward. But I would say, if people complain about it, it's a justified complaint. Our ability to correct it is very limited based on what I just explained to you. Our ability to correct it is, is very limited based on what I just explained to you.
Okay, thank you. With apologies, Mr. Chair. I need to switch to my phone. I need to get to Annapolis, but I will be listening in. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions from folks on the committee before we go back to the sponsor? Seeing no questions, I will turn it back over to Councilwoman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, and you may not have this in front of you, so maybe this is a request, maybe it's not, but can you talk to us about the scope or number of complaints that are handled within the command discipline structure? Specifically, how many complaints are handled through this process rather than the PIB?
So the answer is zero. All complaints are handled by PIB.
Okay, so there, are there, is that saying that there's nothing that would be initiated at the district level?
Correct. No case can be initiated at the district level. Almost, all cases have to come to PIB. Now, you may be thinking of back in like 2018, and before there was a CIU, which was Command Investigation Unit, which used to sit in the commands. They could do their own investigations. That did exist back there. It hasn't existed since 2018. We also have a process which the major talked about earlier, which is an expedited resolution process. If cases come here, again, all cases come, start here. If cases come here and we look at it and it's one of those 12 areas the major mentioned earlier, we have the ability to send it to the commander, to review it, to talk to the member. And if a member agrees that what the complaint has happened, they can then accept it. A lot of that is lost property, you know, fair to appear for court, et cetera. They can accept it. And then it comes back over here, but we control all of those cases. We, we house all of those cases. There is no command initiated investigations, zero. Those are the 12 right there. And actually, Michelle, if you go to slide 20, it actually has the number as the number of cases. This again started in October 1st of 2019. Again, the cases come here, we review them rather than doing a long investigation to find out well, this is something that the, the member obviously did. They'll probably just admit to it. We could save everybody a lot of time and really get the penalty to the person immediately. We have sent so far 261 cases, two commanders to look at. They've closed 244. And of those, 195 were sustained. These other ones, the three, four, and 42, those cases came back here and we did a case and determined them to be either not sustained or found exonerated. And so, and then 40 of the cases, the individual did accept, and so that came back here as well. The number where it says days to complete 78, that number is a little bit skewed because when we first took this on in 2019, we pulled some older, some cases that were pending. So it skewed the number. Currently today, it's an average of 22 days. So for the time we get the complaint, and these are not, these are only complaints that don't have to do with the public, right? These are only internal type complaints in that list of 12. You know, a little bit, you know, tardiness, fair to appear, you know, those ones. Once we get it, we set it out. By time it's the, the commander meets with the person, they accept the responsibility, they take the punishment, or they, they pay for the lost property. It comes back to us. The average today is 22 days. So it's very quick to sort of get those cases a resolution. But again, those all start from here and return back here. Nothing can be done in the districts alone.
And I could just add, I mean, that was baked into the policy, right? And we developed that policy right along with the Department of Justice, members of the monitoring team, the public feedback, member feedback. And we started off small. We originally only included it for those complaints because they really wanted to make sure this process would work as, as it's laid out in the policy where it starts at PIB and ends at PIB. You never skip that, right? And so we piloted it for a while. We added a couple more complaints and then after this e-learning, all 12 will be active for that. But again, nothing, it all goes through PIB.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I had two questions and one committee request, if that's okay. Two more questions and one request. Okay. All right. So, well, I'll start with the data requests. So, because we, I forgot to ask it in the last round. Could we, so you mentioned acts of discrimination or retaliation under category E on the presentation. Can you provide us how many complaints fall under this category, both internal and external in the last three years? That's just a data request that we can follow up on. And again, we'll, we'll send all these in writing and I'll try and work with the chair to just send one list. Or we will work with the chair to send one list. So the question I had, that was for my last round. From a process standpoint, we've had victim advocates and attorneys reach out to us because of how complaints are currently being handled. In a few of the situations, we've been told that external complaints have been closed against officers without any interviews being conducted with the victim or the complainant. So the first question is what oversight is done to ensure cases are not being mishandled? And what is the process when a complaint is lodged against an investigator who fails to adequately investigate the complaint?
Sure, I'll turn that one over to my major to answer that. He's the one that does the day-to-day operations for that.
Sure, thank you, sir. All right, there were two questions there. Let me handle each of them. What was the first question specifically?
Well, the, the first was a data request. For the last three years, the number of complaints that fall under the category of acts of discrimination or retaliation, how many complaints fall under this category, both internal and external in the last two years? That was just a data request. Unless you have it on you now. Okay, yeah, we'll send that over in writing. But the, the question was what oversight is done to ensure that cases are not being mishandled? And what is the process when the complaint is lodged against an investigator who fails to adequately investigate the complaint? Context being that we've had victim advocates and attorneys indicate that they didn't feel that the, there was a thorough enough investigation into their external complaint in a few instances in which no interviews were conducted with the complainant themselves.
All right. So as far as making sure that we interview our complainants, that is, that is a, a, that absolutely has to occur and it has to occur very soon into, into getting the complaint. We have, we have procedures here that require the supervisors to double check and make sure that, that there is contact with the complainant very soon. Sometimes, you know, particularly during the time of COVID, some of these interviews had been done over the phone. We have a recorded line. We are able to, you know, sometimes if it's, if it's best to get the information over the phone and on the recorded line, that is a easier way to do it and also is sometimes more comfortable for the, for the complainant who may or may not want to actually come into our building. That being said, sometimes, sometimes when a complaint comes in, it might be handled by, we call it batters up. So we have a group of people that take the complaints on a daily basis, the intake of the complaints. If the case is assigned to the investigator later on and they review the recording of that original interview, there may be enough information within that first interview for the investigator to go forward, and they may not necessarily need to be an additional interview. Whether there's an additional interview or not, there still should be contact with the complainant all through the course of the investigation as, and especially at the conclusion of the investigation. So that should be happening on a regular basis. And if it's not happening, we certainly would want to hear about that. As far as complaints against our investigators, we do get those from time to time. And we have a policy on how we handle conflict investigations, and that's also in our PIB manual as far as depending on what unit they work for. Like, for example, if they most of, if somebody on the floor gets a complaint, whether it's for something they've done off duty or something that they've done in the course of their internal affairs work here, that would be handled by our ethics section. If we get a complaint against our ethics section, that would be handled by the floor. We spend a lot of time making sure that our, that the people that are doing the investigation adhere to the recusal process, which for every case that comes in, they're required to, to sign off saying that they can, they can judge the accused officer fairly and impartially and that they do not have any, any previous connections that would interfere with their ability to do so. We have also from time to time gone to external agencies to investigate complaints, whether it's the Baltimore County Police Department, the state police, or the Office of the Inspector General. We've used them before in the past for investigations that we feel that it would be, it would be difficult for it to be done by our investigators here. If I missed any part of your question, I apologize.
And I can, I can jump in a little bit too. If that's all right. You know, obviously, we're under federal oversight. And the point of the federal oversight is that we become a self-assessing and self-correcting agency. So in that manual that we've now talked about probably half a dozen times, which is massive, there are steps in there that PIB investigators and command are required to take so that there are checks and balances on the work that's being done that can't be skipped over. But also, every month, we meet with the members of the Department of Justice and Monitoring Team where they've gone in. So they actually have access to our internal affairs database. At any point, they could just jump in there and look and see what we're doing. And so they'll pull cases, they'll sit down, they'll talk to us, let us know where we think we can make improvements. It's all about technical assistance. But then they are also required to produce a report on our progress. And it's not just the review of data, which we are required to report on. It's not just a review of the data, but it's considered a compliance review where they will go in and do a really deep dive on a statistical significant percentage of those cases, which I don't, I don't know what that is off the top of my head. But, and spend a lot of time going through the, the exact same things that you are asking, you know? Even when the detective is writing their report and putting the information I pro, are they using like detailed descriptive language? Do we actually, can we actually tell what they're talking about through the narrative, right? It's not just looking at data. They really do a deep dive into the system and the work of our detectives and then the work of supervisors over those detectives to make sure we're following the training and to make sure that we're following the PIB manual. Their next assessment, I believe, is probably going to be out, they'll start, they'll start doing that deep dive later on this year. And then I think it's supposed to be out probably early next year. I don't, I don't know the timing. It's really, it's there. They are responsible for it. But that's, that's my understanding of where they are.
Just a quick follow-up on that. What I guess, public engagement is involved in this? I guess, so you know, it looks like there's a lot of oversight, which is good to hear from other law enforcement agencies and obviously the federal, federal oversight. How do you engage with the public in assessing these processes? You know, I guess in these investigations, are there, is there like a random sample of complainants that are followed up on? Like, how do we, you know, where is the, the public voice in this process or the, the voice of advocates in this process?
So I can handle the, the aspect of, you know, what we are doing for the public. One thing we did is we, we held a forum for the public where we talked about our complaint process and we talked about a lot of the aspects that we talked about in our, our presentation earlier. We did that both in English and in Spanish and we received, you know, quite a bit of input and questions and, and, and response to stuff like that. I mean, obviously, we, you know, as we spoke earlier, you know, we have a frequent, we have frequent engagement with the civilian review board. We have, you know, we've received complaints from all sorts of community groups. We received a complaint not too long ago. I'm just, that's off the top of my head where there is a, there was a, a group of people who are dedicated to serving as, such as like a liaison between government entities and community organizations. And, you know, we received a complaint through that entity and that was an individual that did not, did not want to participate in the process at all, but yet the, the group made sure that we got the information as we would any anonymous complaint so that we could, we could go forward and, and handle it from there.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I had a few more, but I'll hold off because they're sort of a different type of, different level, around the questions.
Thank you. I, I, I don't see anybody with a hand up. I do have one question, just as we're going through the round. Can someone tell me at what point, if, if, if this does happen at all, that we offer some sort of tracking number or a way to refer back to a case for complaints that are sent in online? As I understand it, right now, you just get a response that says, thank you for submitting, but no tracking number to track that progress.
That's one of the things that we're planning on doing soon as we introduce the public portal, which the consent decree requires. We, we are, we're presently receiving demos on, on public portals and that's, that's the future.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Okay, thank you. So lastly, officers in various districts have expressed sincere concerns about how policing is happening within their communities and particularly on patrol. We've been informed that officers have been encouraged not to intervene when incidents occur until after they are radioed to the reported incident. And I'll just, given an example, I, I spoke to an officer who, who noted that on more than one occasion, they heard gunfire, but did not respond immediately and until the call came in and expressed concerns that, you know, that the, you know, the individuals involved were likely to be long gone by the time they got there. But we've had multiple officers report that they're encouraged to do this. And the reason that we've gotten is that the mandatory administrative leave policy, when there is a officer-involved incident. So I guess, could you, oh, actually, sorry, let me finish reading. An example that was given, because I don't want to miss this part, was that a patrol officer sees someone with a gun in their waistband. And if the patrol officer pursues that suspect and it leads to a potential shootout or incident in which the officer is forced to discharge their weapon, they will then be placed in an automatic mandatory administrative leave for a minimum of six to 12 months in which the officer cannot perform their regular duties nor can they work overtime. Can you, or someone on, on, on the panel, talk to us a little bit about the administrative leave policy and the parameters? And specifically around officer-involved incidents? Or even just the, the allegation that officers are, are instructed not to respond until there's a non-1 call?
Yeah, I think we're going to handle this in two parts. So the, the first part about an officer kind of hearing gunshots and waiting till the call comes out, that is absolutely erroneous. We have come before the, this committee many times and talked about ShotSpotter and how important it is that that piece of technology is on every single officer's cell phones. So if they, if a shot comes out, the officer is immediately alerted and they can look to see if they are in close proximity and get there faster than the call comes out. Whether somebody calls it in or whether or not it is, it comes out through ShotSpotter. They, that is important for us for a variety of reasons. First and foremost, the officer can get there faster to offer life, lifesaving first aid. So, so I'm not exactly sure where that is coming from, but that is patently false. I will pivot to DC Nadal, who will talk a little bit about the administrative leave policy.
Sure. So there, there's a couple of things to take into account, and this is a, a topic that does come up often, and we have discussions about it. What the officers are probably relaying to you is if they get involved into a, in a shooting situation that they then put on administrative leave. Their police powers are not taken away from them. They are put on administrative leave. And the reason they're put on administrative leave is, is a, is a few things. One is we as an agency want to make sure that our officers get the assistance they need through our health and wellness program. It is, it is not easy to discharge your weapon at somebody. It is not easy to know if, you know, if you take the life of somebody, that, that you don't just shrug off and go back to work, right? It has a lot of of, of impact on any individual. So we want to make sure that I, we want to make sure that our officers get the help they need. And so our health and wellness program is, is very well-trained to make sure that not only do we, they get the resources inside BPD, but we have contractors outside PPD to make sure that they get that assistance. Now, Now, it does come up here at a time when they've gone through that whole process and they feel that they are ready to go back to work. Most of these cases are, are over at the state attorney's office being reviewed for prosecution. Now, I will say that that process does sometimes take a long time. And while it's taken that long time, some of those people aren't, I think right now we have, and I'm gonna look at my major, but I believe it's 16 people that are, that are in this bucket right now that are off, that are administrative. What they can do as an administrative, as an administrative function is they could still work overtime doing red light cameras overtime. They can work overtime in a district, but they just can't, what we don't want them to do is be out working, interacting with the public until they've been, you know, criminally cleared. The liability to this agency, if we put somebody back on the street and they get involved in a second situation or some other situation where somebody gets hurt and we get sued, you know, could be tremendous. And so as an agency, we want to make sure that one, we aren't putting people back to work that are under the scope of being criminally charged. And two, we want to make sure that when we put them back to work, that they are ready to go back to work. Not that they say they're ready, because I think most people on here would know, a police officer would say they're ready two minutes to go back to work. When, you know, we all know that they're really not. So we want to make sure that's appropriate. I, I will say that we are reviewing a process where as the deputy commissioners from this agency along with legal would get a briefing on the case, would review the case. And I'm not talking a week after the incident, I'm talking a couple of months after or a month after. When health and wellness says they've completed everything appropriate and we feel that they're okay, that we would review it, we would then review the criminal case as well. And we would make a recommendation to the police commissioner that this person, we don't see criminal liability from our perspective. They've completed health and wellness. Everybody believes they're in a position to go back to work. They've kept up with their training, et cetera. And then give him the option to say, you know, yea or nay. We haven't done that yet. We're in the process. We're discussing that. But, you know, there is a, there is a, a bit of concern that if we put something back to work and something else happened, that, that could really come back civilly to hurt the agency. So we're in discussions about it, but currently, and I see the majors keyed me and it's 21 people. We have 21 people in that administrative role. We do hear occasionally from them like, when can I go back? They do sometimes say, well, I can't work overtime. Again, they can work overtime, they just can't work operational overtime. And I get it, that's what they want to do. You know, we feel their pain. But, you know, as a liability perspective, we have to be really concerned about the agency and certainly concerned about our, our members.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna wrap up questions there and then go into public testimony. You can get the instructions up. We'll jump into public testimony. Here, what, I'll just state it out briefly. If you are open to testify, please use the raise hand function on the bottom right of your screen. And we'll acknowledge you then. Please state your name for the record so that we can know for sure who's speaking. If you are joining us by phone, we will unmute you once we get to phones and we will, you'll hear two beeps. Please state your name and then testify. If you don't want to testify, please say so and we'll move on. With that, let's see if we see any hands up. I don't see any hands up at the moment. Give folks a couple more seconds. In the meantime, we'll check the phone lines. We have one caller and we're gonna unmute that person now. Good afternoon. Do you have any testimony on, on this bill?
Yes, hello. My name is Yasmin Cronfry. I'm an attorney at the Ror Center.
Thank you. See, you have two minutes.
Okay, I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I have found with my clients that are pretty consistent when we're dealing with police. All of my clients are victims of crime based on the types of cases that the Ror Center takes. And we have a lot of situations where the police will not speak to a victim, especially a gunshot victim. After they have, like they'll meet them at the hospital and they'll talk to them in the very beginning when their person is obviously shot and in pain. And there's really no follow up. And when I call to ask for an update on the, the status of the investigation or anyone from my staff calls, we explain that we represent this person, we explain who we are and what our role is. And we very consistently are told that no information can be given to us, not even a status update. And there's no communication with the victim, not through us or even directly. A few times when there is direct contact, we've been very clear, hey, we're acting as the liaison between the police and, and, and the victim who's our client. And what we find out is the police will call the, the client directly. So there's also a misunderstanding as to the role of an attorney. Once we have a client, it does not have to be a criminal defendant, but the police should not be reaching out to them. So that's another problem I've noticed. With DV clients, we have a lot of problems where the police have given their address away to the abuser. We had one incident a couple of weeks ago where this woman is, she has an ex who's an abuser, she shares a child with him, but she's unable to, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. You can finish up if you'd like to finish your thought.
I, I would, yes, thank you. We utilize the state program, the Safe at Home program, which is the address confidentiality program for victims. Our understanding is that all state actors, which I believe includes police officers, are not to disclose the victim's address if they are part of this program. And we have had instances where it's been disclosed because the police are either not educated on what it is or they don't believe the victim or the abuser is somehow able to get their story across and the victim is unable to convince the police that that's just not what's happening. And a couple of weeks ago, we had a woman who's in this program who was being harassed and followed by her ex. And he was able to narrow down what street she was on. But it wasn't until the police forced her to go into her home that he find out which home she's in. So we are now having to relocate her again. And this person had an active warrant. She told him, she told the police officer that this person had an active warrant. He still wasn't arrested. They claimed that they couldn't see the warrant, even though she could pull it up on case search. You know, and this is someone who set fire to an ex-girlfriend. So it's, we're not talking about.
Thank you. I, I, I just want to make a note to the department. It, it sounds like we, we may need a, a better way of managing our system. I know we're working on this as a matter of the consent decree, but if we've got instances where folks are putting in complaints online and not getting some way to follow up, that could be problematic. And it sounds like in the instance that the, the, the woman that just spoke alluded to, there's, there's other instances in which we're unable to connect the person to the status of their case. So I just wanted to note that, as well as the other issues about discretion about information being shared. So, thank you. I, I don't see any other hands up at the moment. I'm gonna give another 10 seconds, just in case there are other folks who would like to testify. Please use the raise hand function at the bottom right of your screen. Okay, seeing no further testimony, that concludes public testimony. I understand we're not gonna vote this bill out today. I think we have some additional data that the department's gonna get to us, which I think will be helpful for further discussion on the matter. I appreciate the, the openness and the very thorough walk through the process. I, I want to turn it over to Councilman Burnett to close out on this hearing before we move on to our next.
I, I think you said it. This was helpful to add additional context to conversations that myself and my team have had with officers. So we, we will send over questions and work with the chair to consolidate that list and make sure we get it out to the committee and, and follow up. But I, I do appreciate, appreciate the thoroughness in which you all have responded. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have sent to the committee all links to those, those reports that we discussed, a link to the, the report, the most recent report prepared by the monitoring team as well as the, the PIB manual. Now, all of those items and all of those links are in the letter, the bill report. And most are also in, somewhere in the, the, the presentation as well. So the public can access that information.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Worsberger. All right, with that, we're going to recess this bill and come back to it later. And we're gonna move on to our next bill, which is Bill 22-0191, Homeless Shelters and Transitional Housing Units Human Trafficking Notice Requirements. For the purpose of requiring homeless shelters and transitional housing units within the city of Baltimore to place a notice regarding a certain human trafficking prevention hotline in certain locations, providing that the provide, that the required human trafficking notices may be obtained by the United States Department of Homeland Security's Blue Campaign website, providing for certain penalties and generally, generally relating to human trafficking notice requirements for homeless shelters and transitional housing units. This bill was introduced on January 10th, 2022, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. Councilman Burnett, the full source.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So as, as you all are aware, at this point, it's, we've had a number of these bills come through. Serve as the co-chair of the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. And one of the things that we try to do at the local and state level is advocate for, for good policy, but also to raise awareness of the issue of human trafficking and make sure that wherever potential victims are, that they know where to find help. This body has been incredibly instrumental in providing additional training for hotel staff, but also at lifting up resources in, in all locations. And so we have the signage in hotels, restaurants, bars. The state has done an excellent job at getting this in airports and, and train stations, et cetera. And this is a national best practice to try and get, you know, ensure that government is pushing out this information to, to any and all who need it. In doing this work, I was approached by staff i- in the Civil Rights Office who indicated that they had received some complaints from people experiencing homelessness who were taken advantage of for their labor and weren't really sure, the, the individuals weren't, weren't really sure where to go to seek help. And so the idea came up to require this in transitional housing and in homeless shelters, which is what this bill would do. I, I will note that last night I sent over five friendly amendments that were drafted from the mayor's office of homeless services to make the bill better. I'm happy to let them talk about the amendments. I can talk about them, but I think that they do a good job at helping improve the bill. And so with that, I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Chair, to this long.
Thank you, Councilman. We're gonna turn over to agency reports. Please state your name as we, for the record, as we go down. We're gonna start off with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Alina DiPietro from the Law Department. I'm, I'm sorry if I'm gonna be a little off on this one because I was asked to cover it at the last minute when my colleague was unable to stay after the last hearing was, went on for so long. So, but we did approve the bill for formal legal sufficiency. Our bill report, if you're interested in it, is, talks a little bit about first amendment concerns and things like that. But we feel they're all, given the nature of, of the purpose for the notices, they're all consistent with any first amendment issues that, that might be brought up. So Law Department approves a bill for formal legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Alina. We're gonna move on to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Neighborhood, Safety and Engagement.
Thank you, Chairman Nick Wilson, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Safety and Engagement. And we stand by our report and support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next is the Mayor's Office of Human Services.
Bill Wells from the Deputy Director from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, which is the, one of the successor departments from Human Services. We stand by our report and thank you, Councilman, for the inclusion of the amendments.
Thank you, Bill. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Any questions from the committee on this bill? I do not see, Councilmember, you still have your hand up. I don't see you jumping and screaming.
Sorry, that's the last one. Sorry, I think I got.
Oh, okay, great. I don't see any questions in the meantime. So we'll, we'll, we'll close the question sections. Please feel free to speak up if you do come upon any questions. We're gonna open up public testimony now. Once again, please use the raise hand function on the bottom right of your screen. And if there are folks on the phone, we will unmute you. You'll hear, you'll hear two beeps. At the moment, I do not see any hands up. And I'm not sure, do we have any other folks on the phone? There's no one on the phone. I'll give another 10 seconds for public testimony. All right, we're gonna conclude public testimony. Councilman Burnett, there are no amendments at the moment, as I understand.
We have five, five friendly amendments.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did say that. Do you want to take some time to talk through those amendments?
Yep. So the first amendment, amendment number one, and let me pull up my notes here. Thank you for pulling up on the screen because I can walk through these. Okay. So the first amendment clarifies the definition of homelessness. And I'm not gonna read, we provided the committee ahead of time a very detailed response from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services of how HUD determines or how HUD defines homelessness. And so MOHS recommended that we establish the HUD definition so as there not to be any confusion about it and, and just sort of promoting continuity in, in the standards that come with that. I think I suppose I could kind of explain it without reading line by line. But in short, they just wanted to clean up the definition and making sure that we're, we're using the federal definition, which is what they're using internally. Number, number two, oh wait, maybe reading these out of order. That's the number, yes. It's one, number one and number two do that. Similarly, number three pertains to transitional housing. Again, it is essentially the recommendation suggests that we mirror HUD's definition of what transitional housing is in order to make sure we're distinguishing it from other short-term housing coupled with supportive services, which is a little bit different than what we're going for here with this bill. Number four adds additional clarity on where the sign should be placed and who should be in charge of doing that. And that's actually what, what, it's cleaned up by both four and five, which lists out the person in charge. Essentially, where that, where it should be as far as the living area program facility, as well as number five cleans up again where the location should be, where, and it's where one or more individuals sleep. And so again, these are, and I'm happy to turn it back over to MOHS if they, if I botched any of that. But in short, just trying to clean up where these things are placed and how we define or in, in continuity with HUD regulations. And I'm good with all of these if the committee is.
Thank you, Councilman. I, I think we've had a chance to see a couple of these before, so I don't think it should be new, new to anyone. Any questions from the committee in the meantime on? Uh, any questions from the committee in the meantime on the proposed amendments? All right, see no questions, um, we're, we're not gonna vote this one out today, we're gonna do it as a voting session, just wanted to give everyone an opportunity to see it all. Um, Councilman Burnett, I'll leave it up to you, do you want to just hold on the amendments for the voting session as well? Uh, give some folks a more time to look at it?
Yeah, that's fine with me, we can do it all at once.
Okay, we'll do that then. All right, um, so with that, we're going to actually go on recess, um, and we will revisit, uh, it seems both these bills at a later date. Uh, thank you, everybody.